Fifteen minutes? So, can we not put that on the TV screen? Like postpone for fifteen minutes? He's working on it over here. I'm sorry, everyone. It would just make for a better meeting, I guess. Mr. Behrens? I see you. Okay, now I see you. You're on for the sign, right, at Goodwill? Or...okay. Do you want to wait for the public hearing on that? And then we'll bring you up? Instead of speaking for the three minutes?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just going to disregard this. All right? Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the June 11, 2018, meeting of the Forest and City Council. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sayam, Harris, Jones is not here. Egan, Caputa, Shuldoff, Henke, Pagano.
Here.
Parson.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the meeting minutes and executive meeting minutes of May 29, 2018? Hearing done, Councilman Henke moves to approve the minutes, seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is the election of officers. I would like to...I move to nominate Jeff Caputa for Council President, seconded by Mr. Egan. Mr. Caputa, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion is carried. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Would you like to nominate your vice?
Yes, I would like to nominate Tim Jones from Ward Two as our Vice President of the Council.
I will second that. It is my understanding that Mr. Jones does. Mr. Jones is a little under the weather today. So, he will accept the nomination. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
And before we take a minute to do, I would just like to thank all of you for this privilege and the opportunity to work with all of you. It's been quite an experience, but I just want to thank you just for the respect that you've all given me and the support that you've given. And I truly, truly appreciate it. I'd like to thank Mr. Hassel and especially Karen Goodwin, who sits right next to me, for trying to keep Robert's rules and me in line, which weren't always the best. But always being there with the cheat sheets or a kick or a hit on the lap, like, "Ah, you screwed up again." But that's okay. Hopefully, they were all laughing with me and not at me. And, you know, and I thank you, all the ones that attend on a regular basis. It has truly been an honor and I appreciate all of you. I leave you in good hands. Councilman Caputa was a great Vice President, so I know he will do a fine job as President. So, this I give to you, my friend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now take the moment to reseat. So move over, Mr. Henke.
Keith, you coming back down this way?
Keith is...
Keith is the yo-yo.
Yes, Keith is moving. He'll be by the menu. I'm going to pass Jordan, since Jeff won't drink out of my glass.
What is that?
My water. All right, my friend. Take that, hit it once. Yeah, where it needs to be.
So much stuff is under here. How much? Oh, sorry. Sorry, Keith.
I'm back.
What was the favorite quote? Even a peepin' town got screwed? Well, something like that one.
You got a million of them.
My first one. I would like to say a few words. It's an honor to become the President of this council. Big shoes to fill from the past previous Presidents. Ever since I've been seated on the council, I have Mr. Shuldoff, Mr. Egan, and Ms. Pagano. Very, very big shoes to fill. Ms. Pagano did a wonderful, tremendous job as President of this council. She showed very good leadership. And we had a few controversial items as her tender as a President. And we had very trying meetings. A lot of them were...some of them got hostile. And we worked through them. And it showed good leadership towards Ms. Pagano. So, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the presentation of the Beautiful Home Awards.
Come on up, ladies.
That's...that's that one, okay.
He's working on it.
Yes, we all go down?
Hello, everyone. My name is Debbie Bryant, and I'm here today to present the Beautiful Home Awards, along with all of my good friends. So, our first ward will go to Ward One. Address is 2280 Lindsey Lane, James and Joe Keeline. Our next ward will go to Ward Two, 1275 Ince Dina, Katie Peters. From Ward Three, 910 Kivin Pamela Stutz. From Ward Four, address 560 Warren, James and Patricia Vance. Ward Five, 325 South Jefferson Street, Bill and Chris Brown. Ward Six, 534 Arbeshawn Street, Sarah Weber and Joe Gillum. Ward Seven, 960 Shawnee Drive, Ron and Linda Meyer. Ward Eight, 3115 Steed Drive, David Morley. Well, Mr. Morley isn't here tonight, so we will see to him receiving his certificate. Ward Nine, 1905 North Downs, Edward Leonard. So from Ward Six, and we have the Mayor Choice Award. The Mayor Choice Award goes to 1002 St. Louis, Lisa and Tom Shearer. And I want to just thank everyone for allowing me to come up today and to present the Beautiful Home Awards. And again, and I'm Debbie Bryant.
Thank you, Debbie. If I could have everybody stay here, if we get all the award winners, we'll get a chair for you. We'll take a group picture. And while we're coming all back up...come on up, everybody. Just want to say how important this is because we're the beautiful city, and we're the beautiful city one home at a time. And you're an example of keeping your property immaculate sets a great example for the rest of the city. So let's give them a big round of applause. And look for your home on the back of the city calendar in December and for next year. A picture of your home will be on the back of our city calendar. Yeah, I want to thank the Citizen Participation Committee for doing this every year and under Carol O'Meara's direction. That photo will also be on the back of the calendar.
Oh, no. None of that, Carrie.
All right, we'll continue. Next item on the agenda is Eddie's Heroes. Councilman Egan's move to postpone Eddie's Hero until next council meeting. I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is hearing from citizens. There's a time to speak to the council on any issues, not necessarily on the agenda, for three minutes. And we have none. Next item is communications, and we have none at that. Next item is our public hearing. Public hearing number 1806021.
In accordance with Section 405, 310 of the Forest and Zoning Code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Forests of Missouri in the council chambers at 9:55 through St. Francois on Monday, June 11, 2018, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition: authorizes special permit to MERS Missouri Goodwill Industries, DBA Goodwill, to allow for the location of a post sign and retail establishment for the property located at 455 North Highway 67 in a B3 zoning district. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard, and anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 397-640 or to D-395142.
Is the petitioner present?
Yes.
Okay.
It's me. Go ahead, start.
Yes, it's...you have the floor, sir.
All right, thank you. My name is Bill Behrens. I'm with Warren Sign Company, and I'm here to represent... And I'm here to represent Goodwill. Got a few photographs I'd like to put up to just kind of help tell the story. Okay. This is the sign we're talking about. It's a pylon sign. It meets the square footage and heights requirements of the city. So that's not an issue. The only thing we're here for is to put the sign in front of the required 40-foot setback. That's the variance. We want to be closer than 40 feet back from the road. This is a site plan that shows some of the unique characteristics of the property. This is north and southbound Lindbergh here. The building sits 200 feet back off the road, which is a significant setback, maybe more than any other building I can think of in the area. We're asking to put the sign in a new island here to mark the entrances to the property. Couple reasons this is important, and I think I can show that here with this overhead view. This is Charbonne Air here, and this, of course, is coming north on Lindbergh. We want to set the sign out here so it's visible, especially to the northbound traffic. You can see there's a big gas station here on the corner. It's got gas canopies. They're really obstruct the view of the property. And if the sign sits back here in the parking lot, it's more obstructed. And it's important for a couple reasons for us to get the sign out here where it can be seen. Number one, we're hopeful that people that are coming up on Charbonne Air, when they know this is where it's at, they can make a left turn and enter the property. If they continue straight on through, they got a problem because this is a divided highway. You can't turn left into the store. You end up having to drive way up here. Make a U-turn just causes more congestion and more traffic. This is a blow-up, again, just to kind of help illustrate the problem. Here's Lindbergh. The 40-foot setback is this line here that I put in yellow. That puts it way back in the curbs in the parking lot. This is a photograph. As you approach the intersection heading north, you can see the gas station over here, really obstructing the view. We want the sign out by the road so it can be seen. And hopefully encourage more people to turn left onto Charbonne Air for the entrance. And again, if you do go through the light, here we are, we've got this curb. There's no way to turn and enter the store without proceeding on up and making a U-turn. One other reason we really don't want to put it in the parking lot is when you put things in small parking lot islands, they're likely to get hit. Cars bump them, they scrape up to them. These are the existing light standards in the parking lot on the small islands. You can see they have big ugly concrete sonnet tube pillars that they sit on to keep them from being damaged when cars bump into them. We really want to keep the sign clean, have a nice clean pull-to-grade, and not set it up on some kind of a big cement tube like we'd have to do if it goes back in a parking lot island. That's the story.
All right, Bill, thank you very much for coming here. I know the P&amp;Z, they denied your further sign.
Yeah, that was my fault.
Can you explain why they denied it?
Yeah, I think I can actually, it was a tie vote. There were six of them. It was three and three. So it was a tie vote. Yeah, to be totally honest with you, I knew we came in here with a staff recommendation for approval. I assumed that was, you know, show up and probably get rubber stamped. Well, that's not the way it works in Florence. I found out through a lot of questions. And frankly, I wasn't prepared to answer it properly. That's why I took a little more time to put a presentation together tonight to really explain it better.
So what is your distance between the proposed sign as is now?
We've got it four feet nine back from the edge of the property line, and that's to the edge of the sign. Sign itself is eight foot eight, so the pole is another four and a half feet back.
So now, you showed where your light standards were. Now, are you replacing all them light standards?
You know, I can't answer that with 100% certainty. I don't think they are.
Because that would be the ideal place to put the sign, in the back. Then you would have your 40-foot variance, correct?
I would say that the ideal spot would be out closer to the road, or wouldn't be obstructed.
With our ordinance, though, the ideal would be?
Yes, if we were held to the 40-foot setback, we'd have to go back in that parking lot.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shuldoff? Mr. Siam?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to just ask, how far back would you be willing to move that sign? Would you be willing to give any distance at all?
Well... Let me find the right drawing here. Yeah, I mean, we'll be as flexible as we can. Again, I don't know if this is upside down for you or not. I mean, we don't mind bringing it back so that the edge of the sign is at the far back of the curb. We just don't want it positioned where a big truck goes by, and it clips it, you know? This is really where it's safe. It's not going to get bumped. But we can bring it back a couple of feet if that's an issue.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Siam. Mr. Egan?
Thank you very much. This is, it means not my ward, but a ward.
It's my ward, and I personally don't know what Mr. Jones feels about it. This is a very unique property in the sense that the petitioner is correct that the front of the building really is blocked by this gas station and the signs at the gas station. It really, it really, I would be supportive of this. I know it's out of our ordinance, what we normally do, but I think this is a unique property, a unique situation. Again, I'll probably defer to Mr. Jones on this because it is actually his ward. But if the sign did fall, it didn't fall in the middle of Ward 3, so I think I got a dog in the fight. Thank you.
Mr. Parson?
Thank you, Mr. President. How are you this evening?
I'm good, thank you.
I just have a question. Are there going to be, is there going to be any signage on the building, on the sides of the building where people would be able to see that Goodwill is there coming from the north and the south?
Yeah, when you're heading south, you'll have a better shot of the building, of course. You don't have the visual obstruction of the gas station. And there will be signs on the building as well. Like, there's a small sign on the Charbonne Air side that shows the donation drop-off canopy.
Okay, but it won't say Goodwill on going northbound? I guess that's it?
On the south side of the building?
Yeah, the south side of the building, yes.
No, I don't think so. Actually, I've got a copy of the drawings. Let me check. I don't want to tell you.
All right.
Yeah, just a little donation drive-through box on the canopy.
Okay, I understand. All right, thank you.
Mr. Behrens, can you please pull your microphone up so the audience can hear?
Sure, sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Harris?
Could you show the picture again, the photo from the road facing, sort of from where the gas station is, from the intersection to the, I'm wondering where the gas station sign is, right there? Okay, so there's no actual sign there. It's just the signage above the gas there. Does it look like it's even with the gas station canopy there, I wonder? Like, where the canopy comes up?
Yeah, I think it's...
Would it be kind of even with that?
I think it's obstructed behind the canopy.
I wonder how high that canopy is there? Is it about, you don't know?
I don't know.
Okay.
I can tell you this, this is, looking in the parking lot, you know, our 40-foot setback is along these islands. And you can see the car wash sign right up here is certainly not back as far. That's up.
So some congruency might be established if it were even with the car wash sign and the front end of the canopy of the gas station.
Yeah, honestly, we're not trying to match up with the other signs. We're just trying to...
Sure. Practicality as far as the traffic flow and, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Harris, that's it? Mr. Hinky?
Yes, thank you. Leave that picture up there with the car wash sign, and maybe have that gas station one ready too, right there. I think a few of us are, I mean, I'm supportive of the sign, but I'm going with Councilman Siam also. What, we don't want one sign, it's all the aesthetics of it going down Lindbergh there, and all of a sudden one's out in front of the rest of them. And I understand you're coming from the north on Lindbergh there, on 67. You want it out where people can see it. Makes perfect sense, and I think we could do a variance on it. But we don't want to allow a sign there that is out farther than all the rest of them that are up and down Lindbergh there, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So maybe if you could let us know what, some kind of happy medium here, where it's closer to this, farther back than what you're proposing right now.
Well... You know, honestly, this island's been expanded to accommodate the sign, hopefully.
Okay.
If, I mean, we need to keep the post in the island. I mean, I guess we could move it back so that the post is on the back edge. But other than that, you know, we don't want to put it back in here where cars are driving through.
Right, right, right. That makes sense. That makes sense. I have nothing better. Thank you.
Mr. Hinky, thank you. Mr. Harris?
Is that a new island there? Is that going to be poured new, or is that an existing island?
There's an existing island there, but this is new. It's expanded.
Expanded, a larger island.
Right.
Deeper?
Yes.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Egan?
I'll pass. I'll go with my original comments still.
Thank you. Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no further comments. Councilman Egan moves to close this public hearing. Second by Mr. Shuldoff. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. This public hearing is closed. Thank you. Next item is old business, bills for a second reading. Bill Number 9388. Councilman Hinky moves for a second reading, second by myself. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Orders to authorize a special use permit to S&amp;A Barbecue Fish and Deli LLC, DBA S&amp;A Barbecue Fish and Deli, to allow for the operation of a restaurant for the property located at 1149 North Highway 67.
Councilman Hinky moves for a third reading. Second by Ms. Pagano. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Orders to authorize a special use permit to S&amp;A Barbecue Fish and Deli LLC, DBA S&amp;A Barbecue Fish and Deli, to allow for the operation of a restaurant for the property located at 1149 North Highway 67.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, then clerk, please poll the council. Poll the council on Bill Number 9388.
Okay, Siam? Harris?
Yes.
Jones is absent. Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Okay, Bill 9388 passes and becomes ordinance 8415. Next item on the bill is Bill Number 9389. Councilman Siam moves for a second reading, second by Mr. Harris. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Orders to authorize a special use permit to Bountyful Blessings North LLC, DBA Bountyful Blessings North, to allow for the adult daycare located at 13210 New Hallsberry Road.
Councilman Siam moves for a third reading, second by Mr. Parson. All in favor? All opposed?
Orders to authorize a special use permit to Bountyful Blessings North LLC, DBA Bountyful Blessings North, to allow for an adult daycare located at 13210 New Hallsberry Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Siam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff? Shuldoff? Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Okay, Bill 9389 passes and becomes ordinance Number 8416. Next item on the bill is Bill 9390. Councilman Siam moves for a second reading, second by Mr. Shuldoff. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Orders to authorize a special use permit to One Dish Wonders LLC, DBA One Dish Wonders, to allow for a catering business located at 115 Flower Valley Shopping Center.
Councilman Siam moves for a third reading, second by Ms. Pagano. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Orders to authorize a special use permit to One Dish Wonders LLC, DBA One Dish Wonders, to allow for a catering business located at 115 Flower Valley Shopping Center.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone out in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Siam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hinky?
No, yes, excuse me.
Pagano? Parson?
Is that a yes? It's a no.
Passes and becomes. Passes and becomes.
Yeah. Bill 9390 passes, becomes ordinance 8417. Okay, next item on the bill is Bill 9391. Councilman Pagano moves for a second reading, second by myself. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Orders amending the 2018 budget by removing a full-time position and adding a part-time community development specialist for the Housing and Community Development Office.
Councilman Pagano moves for a third reading, second by Mr. Shuldoff. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Orders amending the 2018 budget by removing a full-time position and adding a part-time community development specialist position for the Housing and Community Development Office.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone out in the audience that would like to speak on this? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Siam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano? Are you sure? Parson?
Yes.
Okay, Bill 9391 becomes, passes and becomes ordinance 8418. Next item on the agenda is new business. Board appointments. First item in the new biz, board appointments. Council appointments. Mr. Siam?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to appoint Jeff Cook of 1520 Bay Meadows to the Citizens Participation Committee.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The appointment is made. Next item on the bill is request. Ms. Pagano?
Yes, I would like to remove the liquor license by the drink for the smoke session located at 1833 from the agenda. They do not have a special use permit at this time.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Next item, bills for a first reading. Bill Number 9392.
Orders amending the 2018 budget by removing a full-time duplicating operator position and adding a part-time duplicating operator position for the City Clerk's Department.
Ms. Pagano moves for a second reading. I'll second that. Second by myself. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Eyes have it.
Orders amending the 2018 budget by removing a full-time duplicating operator position and adding a part-time duplicating operator position for the City Clerk's Department.
I'll move for a third.
Ms. Pagano moves for a third. I will also second that. Ms. Pagano moves for a third, I will also second that. Any? Roll call?
Syam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Orders amending the two thousand eighteen budget by removing a full-time duplicating operating position and adding a part-time duplicating operator position for the City Clerk's Department.
So, bill number nine three nine two. Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Syam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones? Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, bill number nine three nine two passes and becomes ordinance eight four one eight. One nine? One nine. Eight four one nine. Got my, my numbers crossed here. Bill number nine three nine three.
Orders authorizing appropriation of thirteen hundred dollars from the General Revenue Fund to account number zero one five three five three three, three two zero zero zero. Office applies for the purchase of software for the Prosecuting Attorney's Office for the, for file maintenance.
Mr. Shuldoff moves for a second reading. Second it by myself. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Orders authorizing appropriation of thirteen hundred dollars from the General Revenue Fund to account number zero one five three five three two zero zero zero. Office applies for the purchase of software for the Prosecuting Attorney's Office for file maintenance.
Councilman, Councilman Parsons moves for a third. Second by Mr. Hinky. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Syam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Orders authorizing appropriation of thirteen hundred dollars from the General Revenue Fund to account number zero one five three five three two zero zero zero. Office applies for the purchase of software for the Prosecuting Attorney's Office for file maintenance.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Syam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bill nine three becomes ordinance eight four two zero. Next item on the agenda is bill nine three nine four.
Orders authorizing appropriation of ten thousand dollars from the General Revenue Fund to account number forty fifty Professional Services for the purpose of funding legal counsel for the City Council.
I would like to amend this bill at this time, and it should be under counsel as a whole. Second.
Ms. Pagano amends the bill, be counsel as a whole, second by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, Ms. Pagano. Next item on the agenda is the consulate announcements. Mr. Egan?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank Jackie Pagano for her service as council president this last couple of years. It's a difficult position, and you handled it well. You have, you had the reins on, on the whole thing very well. It's like riding a stagecoach, right? And his whole long type. So I want to thank you for your service, Jackie, you did a great job. Secondly, I wanted to remind everyone that this Friday night, June fifteenth, is the Knights of Columbus in the City of Florissant. We partner with the Food Truck Night down at the Knights' Ground at number fifty St. Francois. The lineup tonight, let me get my glasses on, Andrew's Bayou Ribs are for that night. Angie Burger Destination Desserts. I don't know if the Southerner will be there, I think the Southerner had a truck fire, didn't they? The Southerner will have a tent fabulous, I know they had a, a truck fire. We'll also have Steak Louie, Two Girls, Four Wheels, Kona Ice, Russo's, Zia's, Slice of the Hill, Cha Cha Cha, My Big Fat Greek Truck, Buzz's Hawaiian Grill, and Sarah's Cake Stuff. The ballgame will be on, a great, great community event, five P M. to eight P M. Coming out to see everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Mr. Harris?
Thank you. I'd like to thank again the Community Participation Committee. I got to sit on that committee for the last year and get to know some of the, the people on that committee. So thanks again for presenting that tonight. And also, Empower North County is a nonprofit that is serving lunches to the summer school kids in Asa Woods School District. And if anyone wants to help serve those lunches, you can go to empowernoco.org and be a part of that. We need volunteers to help. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Shuldoff?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to congratulate all the winners tonight for the Better Homes Award. They take great care of their property, and it, it's really a good thing for our city, and it's a great program. I would also like to thank Ms. Pagano for her tenure as President of the Council. I know your father would have been very proud of you, and your brother sure is too. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Shuldoff. Mr. Hinky?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank my, our youngest son and daughter-in-law for giving us our seventh grandchild, Lucas Edward Hesselbach. Lucas Edward Hesselbach, beautiful kid. But I'm also going to ask, he's got some serious health issues facing him, and I'm going to ask just for everybody for a few prayers for, for Jenny and Kurt and Lucas. And hold, hold them in your prayers, and it'll work. Thank you.
Mr. Parsons?
Thank you, okay, thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to thank Jackie Pagano, Ms. Pagano, for her services as President. She did a wonderful job, and I'm sure that Mr. Kaputa is going to do a wonderful job also. As far as announcements are concerned, I just want to continue to encourage people to join the Neighborhood Watch. Myself, Deborah Thompson, and Cheryl Smith, all from Ward Eight, we're going to be knocking on doors this Saturday to try and encourage people to be a part of the Neighborhood Watch. So when you see me knock on your door, don't just ignore me, come and say hello. Additionally, I want, again, to encourage people to, to know your Florissant Five. Know your, your five closest neighbors. Just over this past week, I, I had a neighbor that lives across the street from me. He's an elderly gentleman that lives with his wife. They've been married for sixty years, but he happened to, to fall, and, and someone, one of the neighbors had to come and, and help him get up. So, you know, it's always good to support your neighbors and, and be there for them, because you never know what, what can happen. And, and I'd hate to think what would have happened if they didn't know to call or have a phone number of, of the nearest neighbor. So just try to look out for each other as Florissant residents. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons. Ms. Pagano?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President, but I will give this to you. I do want to say one thing, though. The neighbors meeting neighbors barbecue that we have every June is sort of being postponed a little bit, one because of the heat and one because we ran out of time. But we will, we will be having it, because I know I've had quite a few phone calls on it. And in honor of Flag Day, and this would be a standing joke between Councilman Kaputa and I, on who would read this, although it was mine. Please let the Marine have the honor. And thank you all for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Pagano. Yes, for the past few years, been a tradition of myself and, I guess, myself. Nobody else cares if I read it, but no. It is in recognition of Flag Day, which is next week, the fourteenth of June. I have a poem here that Ms. Pagano found on the internet, and it is, and it kind of, kind of sums everything up that, that this country is all about, and the flag that represents this country. And it is called, "I Am The American Flag. I speak from the wisdom of a long life. I first felt the vigor of wind in my multicolored face when I was unfurled my thirteen stars over two hundred and thirty years ago. I have known forty-five presidents and have traveled across the continents, ocean and deserts, and on the surface of the moon. I was there when my nation was born. I was in the hand of my first president in the blood and snow of Valley Forge. I stand for peace, honor, truth, and justice. I stand for freedom. I have earned the right to speak, the right paid for my freedom of speech is a, a price few remember or can comprehend. Most forgot, but I still see my memories, those bright, brave young men who died for me at Pork Chop Hill, Normity, Iwo Jima, Pearl Harbor, the Coral Sea, Okinawa, Carigador, and the jungles of Vietnam, and then also in the mountain terrain of Iraq and Afghanistan. I have fought in every American battle and every war since seventeen seventy-six. And when they died for me, I wrapped them in my love and draped my honor over their caskets. Those who died for my right to speak and freedom are buried in the Flanders Fields of France, the Punch Bowl in Hawaii, in Oylington and Gettysburg, and in many other places under the sun. I fly proudly over these graves at all of these places, praying that wars might end forever. I rise every morning to watch over the graves of our finest men, whose years were short, but whose service was longer than we can ever measure. Because of those brave American patriots, I can fly atop the greatest buildings in the world. I can stand watch in America's halls of dustis. I fly majestically over institutions of learning and stand guard as the greatest power in the world. Stand up and see me, I am the most recognized symbol in the universe. Yes, I am the American flag. More than one million three hundred thousand lives have been sacrificed to give me that right to speak. I have been burnt, torn, and trampled, sorry. Gets me every time. Where was I? I have been burnt, torn, and trampled on streets of countries where I helped set free. I've been stained, spit upon, and defiled by my detractors. Yet there is no place on the face of this earth that knows greater freedom than my country. Freedom to each man, woman, and child to choose his life, work, to travel from state to state without passports, to attempt and succeed, to fail, and not be cast in prison for failure. Freedom to speak, write, praise, question, or criticize anyone, no matter how high his station or his rank. Freedom to worship and not to worship as a mind of heart that dictates. Freedom to start your own business and become a capitalist, to create dignifying jobs, opportunities for people who want to know the pride of working for a living. I am proud of the harvest of our land, corn, wheat, cotton, apples, nuts, and cherries, oranges, and peaches. I seed a harvest in all fifty states, and I am proud, for we help feed the hungry of the world. Be humble and be proud of our greatness. I am particularly humble and proud when I am torn into strips and used as bandages for my wounded comrades on the battlefield, or when I am flown at half-mast to honor my soldiers, Marines, Navy sailors, or airmen, or when I lie in the trembling arms of the grieving parents at the grave of their fallen son or soldiers. We stagger at the internal debt we owe to the untold number of American veterans who choose to set aside their personal ambitions and dreams to assure the well-being of our nation. Yes, be proud and be humble. Enough to know where your glory and greatness come from. I am called O Glory. My glory is the freedom that I give to every man, woman, and child living in America. I am the world's beacon of hope and liberty, and all I can say is, give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free. Yes, I am the American flag, I am your flag, and I am the flag of freedom. Thank you. One other thing I have, my announcements, if you're a firearm owner, make sure you secure your firearms. Don't keep them in your car, keep them locked up in your home. Do not leave them in your vehicles unsecured. Thank you. Mayor? There we go.
Good job, Marine.
Thank you, sir.
I served with many good Marines in Vietnam. I was in Da Nang. I saw some flag draped caskets loaded upon C one forty-ones. Very passionate words. We, we had a ceremony Saturday with veterans, firefighters, and police officers. And we retired a flag, and some, symbolically. We have a box here at City Hall where you can deposit your tattered flag so that it can be retired honorably. And if anyone here is listening and wondering why we are so dismayed when the flag is disrespected in any way by anyone, just remember the passion and the emotion that this Marine next to me expressed in that beautiful refrain. We, on the same topic, sort of, we, we had a walk-through history program a couple of weeks ago, and we honored Lieutenant Michael Blassi, the repatriated Vietnam-era unknown soldier. A very unique event in the course of human history, and just happened to be a native son of Florissant. We must have had almost a thousand people out by the VFW. It was a very well-attended and very moving ceremony. We had the brother of Michael Blassi with us. We had a Gold Star Mother. We had a recruit that was just about to go into the Army and put his life in harm's way. There was so much symbolism that night, and so much patriotism, it just made you proud to be from Florissant. The next night, we had an upbeat presentation with, we had a guy named Jason Roberts, who was discovered by former Council President Jackie Pagano, current Council President Jeff Kaputa, and current Council Vice President Tim Jones at the Missouri Municipal League that they attended last year. And Jason inspired us with some outside-the-box thinking that he did in Dallas. We had a good crowd at our theater on May thirty-first to try to stimulate some new ideas for a brighter future. I had the privilege, thanks to collaboration and invitation from Kansas City Mayor Sly James, who invited myself and Mayor Pagano from St. Peters, the mayor of Branson, the mayor of Jefferson City, the mayor of Columbia, and one other mayor, to meet with Governor Parsons and his wife Teresa at the governor's mansion, not, not the governor, at the governor's office in the Capitol Building last Tuesday. And I can tell you that we were very, we were very warmly received with a, a lot of hospitality, Florissant-type hospitality. The governor and his wife are a couple that you would just love to go out to dinner with. They were very down-to-earth, very humble, open to new ideas. And the governor stated to us that he wanted to put politics aside, and he wanted to get things done for the people of Missouri. He expressed, he pledged support for infrastructure, including the transportation user fee for gasoline. And he really gave me the impression that he wants to move this state forward for the next two and a half years. And I'm looking forward to working with the governor, along with the other mayors of the state and county executives, to move this state forward. Starting yester, starting today, our new finance director is Kimberly Johnson. She comes with a great biography of experience, including former municipal work in the area of director of finance in another city. So we wish her well on her beginning, her tenure here with the City of Florissant. And Parks and Recreation, Recreation Director Cheryl Thompson has agreed to be the acting director of Parks and Recreation, at least for the next four months, and also do her duties as the recreation director. So she'll be in charge of our Parks Department, at least for the interim. We also want to announce that the Police Department is going to be hosting some safety and defense seminars for residents, and for, especially for seniors, on Monday, June eighteenth. eighteenth, confrontation avoidance and safety for older adults. Tuesday, June nineteenth, advanced confrontation avoidance, and Wednesday, June twentieth, escape and evasion, that's for teens and up. And we're going to have a hat party on the Wednesday night out for June, June twenty-seventh. We're going to have a hat party at Cordy's, which is in front of the old City Hall across from the, which is currently the funeral home down on St. Francis Street, Buckholz. So that's going to be featured music by a duet band, and that night, we also are going to dedicate a, our thirty-third history plaque to honor the late Paul Dietrich, who the Dietrich Auditorium is named after, a Christian hospital northwest, and who was instrumental in starting the Christian hospital system that benefits Florida, both the Northwest Campus and the Northeast Campus. His son currently is in the medical profession on St. Francis Street. The chief and I would like to remind Florissant residents, as we get ready for the Fourth of July celebration, we're going to have a great fireworks display up at the Egan Center again with the, with the North Winds Band and concert, but fireworks are illegal to be shot off by individuals in the City of Florissant, and the Police Department will give a summons if fireworks are used in the City of Florissant. For the last couple of years, you may have noticed that the fireworks has been way down, not totally gone, and it's been a much safer city because of that. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Pagano moves to adjourn the, the regular meeting, second by Mr. Hinky. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Meeting is adjourned. The next regular council meeting will be June twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen, Monday. Thank you.